Well, in that case, since it is 6:30, let's, and we're all here, ready to go. Let's go ahead and get started. Welcome to the Charter Township of Meridian Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Today is Wednesday, February 24th, 2021. It is 6:30 PM and I will now call this meeting to order. And it looks like the first item on our agenda for this evening is up for approval of that agenda. Anybody do I hear have any motion? Okay.
Move.
Oh, I had done, okay.
I was just gonna move, move to approve the agenda.
Okay, so motion to approve the agenda, do I have a second? Member Hendrickson, I have a second. So this is a vote to approve tonight's agenda. Member Field Foster.
Yes.
Trustee Opsmer.
Yes.
Member Colhanek.
Yes.
Member Hendrickson.
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. So our agenda is approved. Now we will go forward and take a look at the minutes. Do you have a motion on the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes.
Okay, I have a motion to approve from Member Field Foster and a second by Trustee Opsmer. Let's see, Member Field Foster.
Yes.
Trustee Opsmer.
Yes.
Member Colhanek.
Yes.
Member Hendrickson.
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes, so the minutes are approved, as noted in the agenda. And we do have one communication, it looks like. Keith, is that something you'd like us to go? Go ahead and look at now or while we're looking at our, at our case tonight?
I can just mention it at the end if you want.
Sounds good. So Mr. Chapman will be bringing that up later, once we are into our case here. And it looks like we have no unfinished business, so we're moving right on swiftly and steadily to our new business, which is ZBA Case Number 21-02-24-1, Johnson Sign Company, 2240 Lansing Avenue, Jackson, Michigan, 49202. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Chapman for his presentation.
Thank you. I'm gonna share my screen here and hopefully we don't have any technical difficulties this time. Let's see.
We're seeing the presentation, sir.
Okay. Hold on a sec. Okay, can you see that?
Yes, we can see that, Keith.
Okay, thanks. Okay, ZBA Case 2102241, Johnson Sign Company. The applicant is requesting a variance to install a second wall sign at 2076 Towner Road. The variance request is from Section 86688, Subsection 1. All limitations governing signs in commercial districts shall apply. So if you refer to the commercial section of the sign ordinance, the applicable section is 86687, Subsection 3. And that is wall signs. One wall sign shall be permitted and may be located flat against the building's front facade or parallel to the front facade on a canopy. For businesses with frontage on more than one public street, two signs may be permitted and in no case, no more than one wall sign be located on a facade and no wall sign shall be located on the rear facade. And this is a location map. The property is located on the northeast corner of Towner and Saginaw Highway. The property is zoned I Industrial and is 2.7 acres in size. There's a 5,613 square foot office warehouse that was constructed in 2017. And in it are two tenants, Great Lakes Office Furniture and Retractable Solutions Inc. The parcel is irregular shaped and it does have frontage on Saginaw Highway and Towner Road. And both the west and north facades of the building are facing Saginaw Highway. The west facade has 101 linear feet of frontage and the north has 48 linear feet of frontage. So currently, there is a 101 linear, linear feet of frontage on the west facade, which permits a 101 square foot sign. So a sign permit was approved on October 5th of 2020 to install a 97.8 square foot Great Lakes Office Furniture and Retractable Solutions Inc. sign on that facade. The variance request now is to install a wall sign on the north building facade. And this sign would also read Great Lakes Office Furniture and Retractable Solutions Inc. This sign will be 48 square feet in size and the linear frontage on that facade is approximately 48 feet. So the variance requested is for a second wall sign. And this is a site plan, the property. This is a, the request of the sign. And picture. This is a west facade, the existing sign that was approved back in October. A couple pictures of it. And the south facade, which is facing Towner Road and also the existing 18 square foot freestanding sign that is along Saginaw Highway. That's all I have.
Okay, great, thank you, Mr. Chapman. Let's see, do we have a representative here from the sign company or the applicants that would like to speak? And if so, can we? Oh, I see somebody in there, looks like maybe Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, how's it going? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, sir. Can you give us your name and your address, please, for the public record before you begin?
Yeah, my name is Jim Johnson and I'm with Johnson Sign Company, located at 2240 Lansing Avenue, Jackson, Michigan, 49202.
Great, thank you so much. And if you'd like, you can just go ahead and speak on behalf of your client and the application.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for everyone for joining too. Um, the reason we have requested this variant was because our client feels that it is necessary to have a wall sign on this elevation due to the traffic that is traveling westbound on Saginaw. He's been having a very difficult time with his clients in his, in the public, being able to find his business as they're traveling. And so the main reason of needing that is for that traffic. He does have one on the west side, but you can't see that unless you're traveling eastbound on Saginaw. And, and the way his, you know, the way his building is and how far it's set back at that angle, it's kind of difficult to see as it is. So he feels that for his public and for the safety of his clients that are traveling to see him, that one on the north side would do substantial justice for him. He has had even neighbors that have reached out and because they, they, clients are stopping by neighbor's house asking for directions because they can't find his business. And he's also, and I don't know if John is on today, but he also, when we were talking earlier, has been having a pretty difficult time with delivery trucks that have been coming to his office thinking he's Wolverine, which is one of the neighboring companies. So they, and a lot of them say it's because of the identification and not being able to see him as they're traveling on Saginaw. So it's really for the, the need of, for their customers and for the public as they're traveling to find them. The delivery drivers that are traveling west on Saginaw is, um, you know, without this sign, you can't really see what this business is, you know, until you're long gone. I know they have the little monument sign out front, but that, you can't really see it either from Saginaw. I don't know if you've drove by it, but with how low it is and how small it is, it's not really doing, doing much for him. So that's, that is the, the main reason of why he, he feels passionate about being able to have this sign on the north side. We do feel like it's in the, the, you know, the intent of the ordinance. He's, he's butted up to commercial on his, on his left hand side of him. And in commercial, I believe, and Keith, you can correct me if I'm wrong, you are allowed two wall signs in the commercial district if you have two frontages. From what I can read beyond the ordinance. So we, we feel that it's the intent of the ordinance, it's meeting that. It's just because he's zoned in the, the industrial district is where we came up with finding out he would not be allowed that second wall sign on a separate elevation. But, and I can answer any questions, the, the sign, I don't know if you all have had a chance to drive by. It's the same material that he made or that we made his west elevation sign. So it's the same color, the silver, non-lighted letters. But yeah, I can answer any questions if anyone has any.
Great, thank you, Mr. Johnson. We appreciate you being here and I'm sure we will have some questions, so stay close. All right, is there anybody else that would like to speak about this case? If so, now is your opportunity. Okay, I do not see anyone and I don't see any hands raised or anything in our attendees section. With that being said, then we will go ahead and get into board time. So anybody would like to start or have any questions? As, as, and have, has anybody been out to see this? Or Keith, do you have any more pictures of the actual frontage as far as where you're driving on Saginaw to see that? I unfortunately, I am familiar with this area, but I unfortunately was not able to get out there.
I can pull up those pictures that I took. Those are from, there are some that are like going east.
Yes, let's take, let's.
Want to see those?
Yeah, I, I'd appreciate that. And anybody else, while we're looking at those pictures, you know, obviously feel free to chime in or if anybody has any questions.
Hi, this is Don.
Hey, Don, go ahead.
Yeah, I, well, I have some questions for staff and looking at the report. And really some clarification, some of which I think just might provide some more information. Some might not be completely relevant. I'm just not sure as I look at this. But my first question for staff, when I look at Section 86688, which you, you quote as saying, "All limitations governing signs in commercial districts shall apply." That's to industrial districts, which is what this is. When I, when I read that in the ordinance book, it then goes on to say, "Except that the maximum permitted surface display area shall be 40 square feet per side." So there seems to be a limitation of 40 square feet in an industrial area. And so my first question for staff is, am I reading that right? I mean, can you confirm that?
Yeah, so basically what that's referencing is a freestanding sign in the industrial district. When that was written, it was intended to more of like an industrial park entrance sign than a freestanding sign for like a singular property.
Okay, the next sec, then the next, the next sex, excuse me, the next section talks about freestanding signs. But okay, your, your interpretation is that the first section is also addressing freestanding signs.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, and I'm sorry, you were gonna say something? Madam Chairperson?
Oh, no, actually, I was just, I was just asking if, if that answered the question, but I think you had a follow-up question, so keep going, you're good.
Okay. My next question, again, I'm not sure if this is gonna be really relevant to what we're doing here, but you do refer to this as a corner lot. It, when I look at the definition of corner lot in the ordinance book, it doesn't really seem to meet that definition. I know at a casual glance driving by, it doesn't seem to be any different from a corner lot, but it's, you know, it's not at the corner of two public streets.
Um, yeah, in terms of interpretation, it is a corner lot. That's all I can say. I mean, and like I said before, the industrial district references the commercial district. So they have the same standards, which means this being a corner lot, they are permitted a sign on the south facade as well as the west facade where there is currently a sign.
I'm sorry, so your position is this is a corner lot?
Yeah, yeah, this is a corner lot.
Does that help answer questions or just give you more questions?
Well, it, it just doesn't seem to meet the definition that's in the book of a corner lot. And I, I understand that driving down the street to all outward appearances, it looks like a corner lot. It's just, but I'll, I guess I'll move on. My last question here and looking at this is, you know that the building is occupied by two tenants. And do they have two separate entrances open to the public?
I think that would, that's a question for Mr. Johnson, perhaps, or any other?
Which, whomever.
Okay.
Keith was at the site today, he can answer that.
Yeah, I, they do share that entrance.
So they, they share one entrance, okay.
I believe so, yeah.
So Keith was at the site today. Keith, can you talk to them about the, where the entrances are to the building?
Yeah, let me pull up that picture again. It's hard for me to switch back and forth here with my screen, so give me one sec. Yeah, so there's, let's see. So there's the entrance, if you can see it.
Yeah, I guess I can't, let me see if I can expand this. I'm sorry, what I'm seeing is like a garage or it looks like a garage door. And it's just hard for me to see.
Yeah, it might not be, it might not be clear, but there is a, the main entrance is right there.
Okay, okay.
Then there's a garage door further along to the south that you see on the other facade.
Okay, and that, I'm sorry, so is there one entrance that's for both businesses that are located there?
That is correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay. What, what would you say is the, the rear of this building? I mean, I can, again, looking at the overview, I mean, there's, you know, there's clearly one side that's just facing out into the field or into, into open space. But I, and again, in looking at the ordinance book, I didn't really come across a definition of, of what would constitute the rear in a lot like this.
Let's see.
We're, we're calling the south facade the rear of this building, is that correct, Keith?
Is that the side facing Townsend or, excuse me, Towner?
Uh, yeah, but for the, yeah, so that would be the rear of the building. And then there's a side and then two fronts.
Keith, can you show the site plan, please? And identify the rear yard for where their yards are in this case?
So, front, front, and then rear, and then side.
Okay, so the current sign is actually located on the side?
No, it's a front.
It's a front, there's two fronts, oh, because it's a corner lot, you're saying, okay.
So Don, if they had asked for a sign, this being a corner lot, which I know you talked about the lots earlier, the, the way we, the definition for corner lot, I mean, they do have frontage on two public streets, so Saginaw Highway and Towner. So if they had an entrance, if this is multi-tenant and I don't, if they had an entrance, we're not considering this multi-tenant building. This is a single tenant building, there are two tenants in it, but it's not designed as a shopping center, for example.
Right, okay. Okay, so for, for the purposes of interpreting the ordinance, it just gets treated as a single tenant building?
That's correct.
Right, okay. Okay, well, I'm, I'm sorry, I think that, I think that answers the questions that I had.
All right, thank you very much, Member Colhanek. Does, did anybody else have any questions or think of anything while looking at the site plan or the photographs that they want to touch on? I think my questions were answered, so I will go ahead and just throw that out there. My question was more to the, to the actual site plan, just getting a visual. So people that are coming down Saginaw, westbound on Saginaw, they're across a divided highway, is that correct?
Yes.
I see member, I see member Hendrickson nodding head. So if you were approaching the building, going, going east on Saginaw, east, northeast, you would be able to see the, the current sign that's there. But coming from the other direction, this is, this is where Mr. Johnson was talking about the, the client being feeling that people coming from the other direction weren't able to see that sign. And, and from just looking at the site plan, I can, I can see that and I can make a case for that being a safety issue and also being a, I mean visually, how, if you were coming from that direction, you really wouldn't be able to see. And at the speed that you're going on Saginaw there in that stretch, you're, you're not gonna see that small freestanding sign until you're up against it. So that's just my, my take on this case for the moment. Anybody else have anything they would like to add? Or shall we go into, Member Hendrickson, go ahead.
Yeah, I think if, if Keith would allow me to share my screen for just a minute here. I don't have the site plan, but I do have Google Maps. So for those who were not able to, to drive by and see this.
Thank you, that, that is, that is very helpful, I appreciate that.
Yeah, and I think it actually, it actually will show a relatively interesting visual for that. So this is on Saginaw, looking westbound. And this building over here, the blue one, is the building in question. And so what you're seeing as you approach from, from the west, or from the east, rather, is first of all, this tree and then the building behind it. And so as you approach a little bit quicker, you'll, or a little bit further, you'll see the north facade of the building here, which is the facade in question that we're talking about. And so if you were, you know, looking for the current signs as they exist today, you're gonna have to get all the way beyond the building to see the sign back here. And so you've, by the time you will have seen the sign for the building, you will have passed the, well, you will have had to pass the building either way, I suppose. But you'd have to look backwards to see it in order to make the turnaround in time. And so I, you know, this is a long way to say that when we start talking about practical difficulties in a few minutes, I'll be, I'll be remembering this visual here. And then my understanding, and Keith or Peter, maybe you can help me out here, the, the pedestal sign is on the south side on Towner, right? Or have I mistaken that?
So that's gonna be almost where your cursor was along Saginaw there.
Okay.
Further towards the drive, you can kind of see it. If you go.
Oh, this?
Yeah, right there.
Okay. Well, be, be that as it may, that's, that's, that's pretty difficult to see as you're approaching, obviously. And this is a 2019 picture, so the, the sign that's on the west facade is not there. But anyway, hopefully that's helpful to those who weren't able to make it out there today or this weekend. I think that's, that's a helpful visual for me, anyway.
Thank you, Member Hendrickson. Yeah, that, that definitely answered some of the questions I had visually, so I appreciate that. Does anybody else have anything to add or ready to get into criteria? Trustee Opsmer, go for it.
Yes, I was just wondering if Mr. Chapman and Mr. Menzer could clarify for the board. If this were not a third sign requesting a variance, what would the maximum square footage of the proposed sign be limited to? If this were a second sign or a first sign?
So they're limited to the linear frontage of the building. So like for that, the permitted sign, wall sign that's there, they could go up to 101 square feet. And I think they're at 98.7. So with this one, they have 48 linear feet of frontage on that facade. So they, I guess in theory, they could go up to 48 square feet.
Okay, and that's what they're proposing for this. They're proposing the linear square footage of that front facade, okay. Right, that was my only question, thank you.
Great question, thank you very much. All right, in that case, I'm gonna get into criteria unless anybody else has any other comments. But we'll just get going and if we do, we can discuss as we go. Criteria one is that unique circumstances exist that are peculiar to the land or structure that are not applicable to other land or structures in the same zoning district. Anybody wanna sackle that one? I think we could all agree, this is a pretty unique circumstance.
I agree.
I mean, if even just, yeah, Member Field Foster is in agreement. I think even just the question of whether or not it's a corner lot, I mean, I think we've established that. But the shape and size of the configuration of the building and where it sits on the lot, to me, creates a special circumstance, also with the, with the two roads kind of butting up to, to each other. Uh, Trustee Opsmer, go, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just have one small addition to that. And as it relates to what Member Hendrickson showed us with Google Earth and Google Maps, which is the speed of the traffic here, so the speed is 10 miles per hour. Living on the north side of town and frequenting this stretch of Saginaw Highway, it is difficult when you can't have a good sightline and you're traveling at that speed.
Yeah, I would definitely agree with that, thanks, it's a really good point. Member Hendrickson?
Yeah, I was just looking to point out that the applicant was kind enough to provide answers to our review criteria, also on page 11. And so I think that, that's germane as we talk about these and go through these to be aware of sort of what answers they gave to this and incorporate that into the discussion. And to the point of number one, I agree, the positioning of this lot makes it a unique circumstance.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I always do, I agree with you, that I, I do very much appreciate when we have applicants take the time to go through each criteria, because this is what we use. I mean, this is our, this is our yardstick to measure a case. So I, it is incredibly helpful. So for Mr. Johnson and the entities he represents, thank you for doing that. And I, and I agree with the statement that it is the positioning of the building, the speed of the traffic. And I know that we did have a comment in the chat there that they don't have business from the south entrance on Towner Road. And again, as, as Trustee Ops, Trustee Opsmer pointed out, unless you go, unless you have a reason to be on Towner Road, you really don't have to be on Towner Road unless you're like going to that park because you could play baseball or soccer there. But yeah, I mean, that Saginaw stretch is gonna be there, you know, for any tenant that was in that building, it's gonna be where their, where their traffic's coming from. And on that note, criteria two is, these special circumstances are not self-created. And I think we can all agree that those, those, these issues existed prior to this case. Criteria three, strict interpretation and enforcement of the literal terms and provisions of this chapter would result in practical difficulties. I think that they've, they've made a, a pretty decent case for that as a particular. I think that they've, they've made a, a pretty decent case for that, particularly with regards to safety. So as Member Hendrickson pointed out, when we talk about practical difficulties, we can right away say one of the biggest practical difficulties, of course, is, is public safety. And making sure that their, their customers can find their location without causing any kind of traffic issues. So does anybody like to add something to that, Member Hendrickson?
Yeah, I think the comments from the neighbors also have been illuminating in this case, showing that, you know, people are unable to find the building and also, you know, having to bother the neighboring businesses and residences. There clearly is an issue with being able to identify this business, especially for those coming from the east.
I would agree with that. I do think that sometimes we have neighbors and people that insert their, their correspondence, and it may or may not, you know, affect cases. But in this case, you do like to see that neighbors would be, it would improve life for neighbors, not having to deal with having to offer directions or having to offer, you know, turnaround space for, for people that miss the building, et cetera. Anybody else on practical difficulties on our strict interpretation? All right. Criteria number four, that the alleged practical difficulties which will result from a failure to grant the variance would be, would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose. This is the one where we always have some issues because the building is being used, businesses are operating there. So would it, does it prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose? Member Field Foster?
So I think as I was going through this and looking at it earlier, I mean, you know, I, I was thinking about that one because that was the one where I was getting hung up a little bit. But when I take in consideration the fact that the location of it and the ability to actually draw people into a business, um, and in the fact that the signage isn't there, so if you're speeding down, or maybe not speeding, let me not say speeding, but as you're driving down, you know, M78 and going by that building, that's a lot of business that they're losing. And if you're basically having them have to go to neighbors to figure out where this business is, or if you've got the delivery people, basically, you know, trying to figure out where you are. That is an excessive drain on your business potential. So I kind of got to the point where I could say that there would be a definite practical difficulty and unreasonably prevent them from operating that business because you're impacting their actual business and their profit margins and their clients being able to locate it. And at the end of the day, when you establish a business, you don't want to have outside factors negatively impacting what you're trying to grow.
Thank you. Well said. I, I was, I'm, I'm still, Trusty Opsmer, go ahead.
I will say, I stumbled upon this establishment or this business back in, it was 2018 when we repaved Towner Road, and I was going through some of my site visits. I like to visit our site work and see the end product of the road paving. And that was when I kind of stumbled upon this business because it's right at the end, and I turned into the parking lot. And prior to that, I had no real knowledge of this existing site and what its function or operation was. So I will say, given the other constraints that we have discussed, it is inhibiting the business from being known to the traffic and the folks who would otherwise perhaps patronize it, or folks trying to locate it. So it is a very unique site if you visited it.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything that they'd like to add about number four? So I, I will just kind of re-summarize perhaps what Member Field Foster said and add in a little bit of what Trusty Opsmer said, which is essentially that the, the alleged practical difficulty of not being able to locate that with the, with the speed, with, with the location, with the setback, with the trees, with being right there tucked in that strange corner of Towner and Saginaw, that this is preventing them from having, preventing this business from reaching full potential, reaching as many customers as possible, and being as accessible and safely accessible as possible. Therefore, preventing the owner from using the property for permitted purposes. Does that sound like a fair summary? All right, just, just getting, getting it together for the minutes. All right, criteria five, granting the variance is the minimum action that will make possible the use of the land or structure in a manner which is not contrary to the public interest and which would carry out the spirit of the zoning ordinance, secure public safety, and provide substantial justice. I think Mr. Johnson said it himself, that this is what the client felt would be substantial justice. They're not asking for a 100-square-foot sign on a 48, you know, linear foot frontage. They're staying within what would otherwise be permissible if it wasn't, wasn't for that existing freestanding and frontage sign. I, I think that this is minimum. This is the minimum action without, and absolutely would secure public safety. I think that's, if we're looking at public safety as being one of our practical difficulties, this, this takes care of that aspect as well. Anybody, any, have anything to add to criteria number five? All right, moving on. Criteria number six, granting the variance will not adversely affect adjacent land or the essential character in the vicinity of the property as evidenced by the communication we have in our packet here, the communications from the neighbors. I do believe that this will only positively, positively impact the surrounding land and maintain the character of the, of the area. Member Hendrickson?
Thank you. If, if I could, I'd like to just confirm one thing that I heard earlier, which is that the sign that they're proposing is unlit, correct? It is a, it's just a, an unlit sign. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, I think certainly if it was lit, there might be an argument to be made that there was adverse effects on neighbors. But no, I think as an unlit sign in this area, especially in this corner, that there's no adverse effect to the land or essential character.
All right, sounds good. All right, moving on then to criteria number seven. The conditions pertaining to the land or structure are not so general or recurrent in nature as to make the formulation of a general regulation for such conditions practicable. We talk a lot about signs, don't we? And since we have Member Hendrickson here, who is our planning commission liaison, who has already told us, and I was at that lovely meeting at the beginning of, or the end of last month, with all of the township boards, that this is something, signage is something that planning is already, already has on their, on their goals for 2021. I do not think that this case in particular is cause for any, any, you know, looking at the ordinance. I do think this is a unique circumstance that even if there were updates that based on the shape and the configuration of this lot would not probably be practicable. So I would, I would be able to say that, that, that we meet that criteria here, unless Member Hendrickson or anybody else thinks that this is recurrent, but I do not think it is. Member Hendrickson, go ahead.
So I think the unique shape of this particular corner makes it not so general that it would be, that it would need a change in ordinance. I think by classifying it as a corner, it will likely benefit from some of the changes that I anticipate will come from updating the sign ordinance. But I think it's different than if this was just a regular 90-degree corner because of the unique shape of this particular lot.
Okay, well, in that case, that's a yes on number seven. And last but certainly not least, granting the variance will be generally consistent with public interest and the purposes and intent of this chapter. And I would definitely agree with that. I think that this is in public interest and absolutely within the intent of the, this chapter. Any, any further discussion on those criteria? I have no further discussion. Anybody have a motion for me? Member Hendrickson?
I move to approve the variance requested in ZBA case number 21-02-24-1 for Johnson Sign Company at 2240 Lansing Avenue, Jackson, Michigan 49202.
Do you have any support? Support, Member Field Foster? Any discussion as we go forward? All right. Oh, okay. All right, then this is a motion to approve the variance request. Member Field Foster?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Trusty Opsmer?
Yes.
Member Cole Hanek?
Yes.
Member Hendrickson?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So your variance has been approved. Thank you for, for attending tonight, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, thank you guys so much. And special thanks to Keith and Peter for being so helpful on helping me get this set in because, you know, with COVID and everything, trying to do variance meetings has changed, and a lot of municipalities are not as helpful as you guys and you all. So I really, really appreciate all your help, and I hope you all have a great night.
Thank you very much. We really do have the best staff in the world. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Appreciate that.
Thanks, bye.
With that note, we do not have any other business on the agenda for this evening, so I will go ahead and open public comment if there's anybody here, and we'll let home TV. Yep.
Yeah, we have to elect officials.
Oh, we're back to electing this month? Oh, I forgot.
Yeah, since this is our first meeting of 2021, we have to elect officers for chair and vice chair.
And look at me, I didn't even get to the bottom of the agenda.
Yeah.
All right. In that case, our other business of the evening, Member Hendrickson, go ahead.
I move to retain Chairman Sura as Chair of the ZBA for 2021.
I second that.
Of course you would.
It was like Scott beat me to it because I was just like, I'm.
Well, I very much appreciate that vote of confidence. Do we have to roll call vote on that one, Keith? Yes.
Yeah, we'll do.
Okay, Member Field Foster?
Yes.
Trusty Opsmer? Sorry, I've got my little notes. Member Cole Hanek?
Yes.
Member Hendrickson?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Why not? I'll, I'll stay. I'll man the ship for, for a while. Do we need to also re-elect our vice chair? In that case, I motioned.
I was like, unless somebody else wants to do it.
I motioned to keep our vice chair, Member Field Foster. All right, support from Trusty Opsmer. And roll call vote is Member Field Foster.
Okay.
Trusty Opsmer. Member Cole Hanek?
Yes.
Member Hendrickson?
Yes.
And the chair votes, yeah. Sorry, you're, you're stuck with me. We're, we're in this ship together. All right, on that note, now that we have officially been re-elected, we can open for public comment. And I will let home TV let us know if there's anybody.
Actually, home TV is having problems this evening, so we will not likely have comments from the telephone line at 517-349-1232. But you do have one person and then the home TV representative in the attendee area, if they would like to speak, they can of course raise their hand at this.
Yep, okay. All right, well, on that note, I'm not seeing raised hands, so we will go ahead and close public comment and go to board comment. If any board member have anything that they'd like to share or say, Member Hendrickson, go ahead.
Just a quick note, I know I mentioned this to the chair and to Keith earlier, but I will not be able to make it to the March 10th meeting, so don't have too much fun without me.
Oh. We'll try. Hopefully we, we don't have another sign case we can bug you about.
We will miss you.
We will be missed. Well, and I would like to take the, the time to welcome our newest member, Trusty Opsmer, who's coming to us as the, the Township Board Liaison. And this is the first time he has served on the ZBA. So this is, this is exciting for us and for him, I'm sure.
Welcome to the best board ever.
Welcome.
Thank you all.
Yes, we do try to have fun, and we always make the best decisions, as our Chairperson Shane would, would have said if he was here.
Yes, his sentiments are alive and well with the board.
It's true. It's true. He taught us how to have fun. Well, on that note, if nobody else has anything to share, I hope all of your houses stay dry with all this ice melting. And I hope everybody takes care for another couple of weeks, and we'll see you on March 10th.
Sounds good.
All right. Yes, thank you, Peter, for another helpful meeting and.
Good to see everybody.
Yes, we'll see you in a couple of weeks. Bye, everyone.
Bye.
Bye.